Welcome everyone to the June 10th, 2019 Regular Schedule Board of Education Meeting. Before we begin tonight, could we make sure that all of our cellular devices are turned off? And with that being said, would you all join me in saying the Pledge of Ladies?
My Pledge of Ladies is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a, I think, a relatively quick agenda tonight, so Lynn, if you could take role.
President Singer, she's absent, Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Baker, here, Treasurer Fidel.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lotterbach.
Here.
And Member Roch.
Here. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item two of the consent agenda, we have 2.1, an approval of the meeting minutes from May 20th, 2019, regular enclosed session. We have a 2.2, following persons of an out of their resignation. Those individuals I listed there, 2.3, payment of the school systems bills in the amount of $12,374,257. And we have some legal invoices for payment from the Thrun Law Firm, both of which are indicated on the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Second to that. Go.
Okay, item three, presentation to the board. Mike.
So, as we have in the past, Michigan High School Athletics Association is a private organization that schools choose to join, so we need to take action to do so, and when you do so, it says you will abide by all the rules and you will help enforce them, as they were not enforcement agency, so, so pretty standard practice, we need to do it each year.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education adopt the MHSAA resolution for the two Midland Public Schools, middle schools, and two high schools for the 2019-20 school year. Complete resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support.
Moved by Phil, support by?
I think Mary got it first.
Mary. Any discussion?
If it was an auction, you'd be at the bike.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Item 3.2, we have a 2019-20 salary letter for the MPS employee groups, and that's going to be Mr. Cooper.
Absolutely, this is what we commonly refer to as a salary letter. It is basically setting and establishing the salary arrangements for all our non-affiliated groups in the district. This year, a little bit different, we do have our three affiliated groups, all with ratified settled contracts, running anywhere from through 20, two to three years, through 2021 or 2022. In general, the unaffiliated groups are in line with our negotiated employee groups. We do that because, of course, we're always looking ahead, as we work with all our groups, to kind of consider all our employees and where that will put the district in the big picture of everybody that we do employ. So, what you'll notice, I know the letter's lengthy as it lays everything out, but in general, 2% to 3% wage increases in there, the benefit package continues as it has been, the HSA funding is the same amount, but we have changed that to a different breakdown. Instead of a half in January and a half then in July, we're going with 2/3 in January of the amount, the other third in September, and we found that better, fits our teachers' contract too, and their length of employment, if they were to leave us, it seems to be a better funding pattern. The other parts of the HSA, if people spend that part of their deductible, they can always request that from us, and we would place that in there, and it didn't matter if we're splitting in half or doing the 2/3, 1/3. The only other category I'd mention is our associate teachers in the pre-primary program. Since that was brand new this past year, as we worked at it, we just kind of set some rates, but really didn't know what the market was and what kind of qualifications they were going to have to work in those programs, so we have realigned those slightly to bring the associates, not the lead teachers, but the associates into align with what is common across not just this area, but in most areas. So at this point, what I would be doing is recommending approval of these 2019-20 wage adjustments as submitted in the letter.
Okay, thank you very much, this is an action item, so we'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the salary level letter for the Midland Public School Employees Groups.
Support.
Okay, moved by Mary, support by John. Any discussion by anybody? Thank you very much for that, I know a tremendous amount of work went into it, and it was great to see the ability to be flexible with the support staff and keep them in line with the competition, so to speak, to make sure that we're retaining talent where we need to retain talent. So, that said, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. 3.3, Mr. Cooper.
We'll get the presentation up here momentarily. Yeah, the network's down, so. Could tell you about to present you the budget. Get a couple things out of the way for it, I could tell you that, I'll just start through, and I'll do just the first part that doesn't take a whole bunch here, and then we'll see where we're at.
You might want to go make a couple.
As you know, by state law, we're required to have a balanced budget, and I want to make sure I mention always, the balanced budget means that it can include the fund balance that we have, it doesn't mean that your revenues have to exceed your expenditures, you just have to have the money that you can allocate to have a balanced budget, and you must do it before July 1st of every year. The difficult part in that always is, the state doesn't have to have their budget done by that time, so this year will be an example of that, that they'll be working towards October 1st, and as we get in here a little bit further, I'll mention that to you, that October 1st date, we're just not sure if they're going to make it at that point or not, but we'll have some good estimates, they've usually come in, even if it's the last minute, I think, Mike, you and I remembered one time, they went a couple days past, but that's technically when their first date aid payment has to come in, is in the month of October, so that will put more pressure on them. A couple of things, I'll just talk about the timeline a little bit, where we were, we had our budget workshop in April, and then we followed up here at this meeting with the actual budget for 1920, and I want to remind everybody, we have a second meeting in June always, and there's a couple reasons, that allows us to, on the backside, you get to finally approve 1920, but you also get to approve the final 1819 budget. Remember, budgets have to be, they're not really advisory in nature, they really just reflect, where's our income coming from and how are we spending it? So we do adjustments, so when we started 1819 last June, we got to March and made an adjustment, and we make another adjustment in June. So actually, when I'm developing this budget, I don't quite know exactly where we finished 1819, and we're good enough to have a pretty nice variance at the end, so it makes it a little more difficult, we predict pretty well, but the variance is that money they give back at the very end that maybe people are holding back a little bit, thinking they might have one more thing come in, so that will be coming up at that June 24th budget. I guess I'll mention while we're at it, as long as I'm at that line, one of the parts of the budget is to establish the millage rates, so I would at least tell you in general that the millage rates, starting with the non-homestead, which was voted on, I think it's back in 2014 now, is 18 mils, that hasn't changed, still 18 mils. The other two are ones that get determined on an annual basis, one is what we refer to as the hold harmless millage, that's because when Prop 8 came in, we were funded greater than that. It allows us to collect $415.31 per pupil. So there's two things the state allows me to do when I determine that rate, I have to use their formula sheets to start with, so, it's not anything in the district made up, it's us providing the input into their spreadsheet, if you will. And what that involves is, how many students do you think you're going to have, and what your taxable values look like? So you take those two things into account, and that establishes the rate that you can levy for that millage. But each year, you have the ability to compensate for what happened the year before, because it is possible, if you remember, I'm giving you estimates on much students, and the taxable value can grow during the course of a year, so every year, the state allows you to come back in, and when you come back in, they let you adjust. If you over-collected back in 1718, they would make you collect less this year, if you under-collected, they would let you collect more. So that rate's going to get established at 1.8090 mils. That's up from last year for the very reason is we under-collected, if you remember, we had a pretty good return on our students, we were underestimating, we had more students, and the tax value did increase during the year, so we're allowed to collect a little more, so it's up 0.1276 mils. One of the things you hear me talk about after this is the summer tax collection for the city, the city will split that in half, so you'll see them do 0.9045 in their summer tax collection, and the same, and know that anybody other than the city, they collect once, so there'll be that whole 1.8090. The actual bond debt millage that you passed in 2015, we get that millage rate based on what we have left to pay, and what we're able to take in our taxable value, and our financial advisor on the bond, PFM is the company's name, will tell us what we should levy. Now, even though you have two series, they look at the two series and put them together, so I have one number for you, and that'll be 2.95 mils. That's up slightly, but that's to be expected as you go, that's, it's the same as what it was set originally, but as you do the two series, typically you're paying off one, and when the new one comes on, it jumps a little bit, and so then you have the two bonds working together, so it'll be back at 295, and next year, you'll do the same thing and bring it back again. Okay?
I think, Bob, you're going to be operating off yours and just go into it.
Okay. Let me do this then. Stop doing anything, so maybe it can work off mine, hang on here.
Cindy has the paper on.
I got paper copy, I was just seeing if I could bring it back up. All right, all right, we're doing paper copy. Budgets take both the revenue and the expenditures, those are the two things we have to do, and so, when we build the budget, we always start with our assumptions. So if I start with the revenue, I usually start with the state, there's two major areas, one would be the state aid foundation per pupil, and the other would be categorical aid. So the state aid foundation is, we're really trying to determine, is there, is there not an increase in how much the state's going to give us? Well, it's a big unknown, as we said before, but we're going to do our best estimate. Up until the middle of last week, we had two estimates, one from the governor and one from the senate, and they both used, I shouldn't say that, one used a 2X formula, one used a 1.5 formula, and they estimated anywhere between $120 per student increase for Midland, we're always on the low end of that, we're like that half X formula, and someone else would get 240, and the senate was 135, so someone else would get 270. The House came out at 90 and 180, but that was late last week. So, as I've given you your packet ahead of time too, I'm estimating that we'll be at $100 per pupil, so that's going to be our assumption. I would caution you in two things, as, I was going to say, as we look at it, but as you hear me talk here, there are two major factors as we go through, and those two factors are, how much are they going to give us per pupil, and how many pupils do we have, and both those are things that we have to estimate, and I would tell you, I would do that conservatively. So, I've looked at this, and I got another slide that's coming up on how many students, so I'll talk about that in a minute, but even when I say 100, if you get $20 more students, you know, that's one swing, if it comes in less than 100, that's another. At the same time, if I have 10 more students than I predict, it's another. So, when you talk estimating, you really have to look at both numbers, and I think what we tried to do is make assumptions that cover us in a conservative fashion, as long as things follow kind of the status quo. On the categorical aid, we do know that the 147 money in these categories go to different things, but this deals retirement system, and anyone that's been on the board long enough knows that the state retirement cost can, or it was, eating up our budgets dramatically. And what I would tell you is, the 147A and C, and you don't have to know all the letters, but one is the cost offset, the other one is the rate cap, those are both assuming to be there, it does fluctuate, based on their assumptions on who will be in our employ next year, because it's going to fluctuate how much money they give you based on the retirement that they're generating. So, that does fluctuate, so we know, or at least we're predicting that's going to be down somewhat. We also know that retirement in general, so when you're looking at retirement in general, that our rates are going to be up about 1.4. Now, the way that is, is because that cap that they give you floats just a little bit, and it's going to float about 2%, 2% for us, and then, even our mix of employees make a difference, there must be eight to 14 different employment plans, so as the people that are on the basic, that sounds bad, but that's the oldest formula there was, and then there's MIP, those are going away, and we're taking on more employees on the newest part of the retirement plan. And so, our mix, how much do we have to contribute to retirement, on average, is creeping slightly up, just because we're putting more into the new system than we did the old. So if I put those two together, we're predicting the retirement rates, cost in the district, about an additional 1.4. We're still looking at maintaining the 31A at-risk funding that we've had, we don't see that as an increase, even though the governor's proposal was there, it has not showed up that way in either the House or the senate. Some of the grants, and I won't run through everything, but what we tried to do is look at the grants in the three proposals, and see if there are any that seem to be missing, not going to be there, or if there were any that we thought we should keep in. So for example, the safety grant that Brian got last year, it's not going to be there, so that's a chunk of money that was in our revenues, that's not going to be there. There was another 147E money, which doesn't appear that it's going to be there, but we don't know, and there's, I guess a common one you might remember is the high school per pupil, they were giving us $25 per high school pupil, that's been out of everyone's plan but the governor, so that looks like it might go in. So we did remove those from the budget that I've put together here. The other thing I should remind you, most grants, not all, have a corresponding expenditure that goes with it, so even if we get some of those grants, then I'm going to increase expenditures, because they have to go to particular items when they come in, so that's something you have to work with. I was going to make a reference to chart, but let's just talk per pupil foundation allowances just a little bit here. If we come in at the $8,631 that I'm projecting, I just wanted to give a reference to people, while that's an increase, I'd want you to know, back in, I guess I'll call it our heyday, 2008 and 2009, $8,904 a kid, and we're just getting back, if we get to 100, to $8,631. And of course, lots of costs have changed in that time, but it's just to show you where we're at. Midland Hampstead District where, because of our taxable value, we do contribute a bigger percentage locally, state makes up the difference, you can look at other districts where the state's providing the bigger chunk of money, because those districts do not have the ability or the taxable value that needs to be there. Other major revenue assumptions you need to do, so when you see some numbers that doesn't look quite the same, remember, we also got a big STEM gift grant last year, 1.2 or 3, 1.25, that won't be in there, so that's going to take the revenues down immediately. We also had a WE diversity grant, was about $50,000, and those both were fully received in 1819. The countywide enhancement millage is going to be down about 6%, there's a little difference in how that gets distributed, the ESA can have a portion of that, and some of the charters, if they're Midland County students, so they're telling us to kind of project that being down. Some of our special ed reimbursements and Medicaid reimbursements that deal with special education, due to not providing those services, or not being able to bill those services, and that will fluctuate from year to year, looks like that number will be down, again, that's just because we're not billing or not having those services. And then finally, I want to talk about the enrollment. We do go with consultant, you know that, and then we look at also what we know about the district, and so to be conservative, I'm projecting enrollment to be down by 30 students. That would take us to a blended count of 7,651, I think that's conservative, if you have in your packet, I know, any of the enrollment charts or the blends that you see, one of the biggest factors for our budgets, kind of stabilizing and not being so dramatic year to year, has been the student enrollment, and you'll see a leveling of the student enrollment as it goes through. And again, I want you to think in terms of, you know, if those 30 students we don't lose and come in at where we are, you know, that's a swing of about 250,000, if we don't get 100, and we only get 70, that's about 250, so right there, that would cover it, and that's one of the things we try to do, is look at all those and kind of play them off each other, so that we come up with what we think's a pretty good estimate of where we're going to be. Not telling you we've never been surprised, but we've been doing pretty good at beating that enrollment, and we've been pretty good at predicting where that money's going to come in at. Like I said, you would see when the chart, and you guys have that chart in the budget narrative I gave you, but a real leveling off of the enrollment trends as we go, and in fact, some of that enrollment bubble as it was decreasing, I had another chart in there that will show you that, we kind of expected at one time that all the losses we had seen in elementary were going to continue to the high school, they haven't, and in some ways, the elementary's really stabilized on top of that, and that's really what's happened, is the kids that you were losing and saying, boy, the grades are getting this much smaller in K 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that didn't necessarily hold true in 6, 7, 8, 9, and up. Did they lose students? They did, but not at the rate that they were, and the elementary's really kind of stabilized itself for lots of reasons. General fund then, let me just give you a real quick here, so you have the numbers, but the general fund revenues, what we're projecting for the budget 1920 is $81,212,554. The vast majority of that, 65.7% comes from the state, about 25.6% comes from our local tax, and then of course, we have federal, and we have that enhancement millage, which is a transfer, and we have some other local revenue. Actually, our local property tax, that little piece of the pie, is bigger than you would see in most districts if they're doing that, you'd see a much bigger slice from the state, but again, that's our tax base, but $81,212,554. On the expenditure side, again, we have to make some assumptions there, we did do what we've commonly referred to our balance, our budget process, wanted you to know that we continued that this year, we meet with all the buildings and departments, and have them project to us their expenditures and what they need to do, we had or did try really hard to keep those spendings at the 1819 levels that they were at. Now, sometimes there's fluctuations in that a little bit, but that's what we tried to do. I guess the one thing I'd want to tell you about that, and if I had to show that to you, but the biggie is, that kind of expenditure only makes up 14% of our budget, or 15% at best, the vast majority of our expenditures are on personnel, 85% to 86% of that, depending on where we are and what our makeup for employees are. So when we do that, there's not a lot of money hidden in that part of it, I wouldn't want you to think that part. We do know, and you know this too, because we've just done the salary letter, we're looking at 2% to 3% salary increases and steps, don't forget, there was a time there when our employees were making concessions and they were not stepping, which means they could move either up based on experiences they go, or evaluation, depending on what employee group you're in, they also could move across, which means they could shift, say they got their master's degree to their bachelor's, and that's back working again, so that's also a cost that's in there. For medical and vision, we have to make a projection, because we don't get those numbers until September, we know what they'll be for the first half of the year, we just don't know what the second half is, and we're projecting 5%. The 5% kind of protects us, because it's only half a year, so even if it went to 10, we'd be in pretty good shape, we've had some pretty good numbers, but, you know, that can't hold off forever, so we'd rather be a little safe there. We do know dental's up 6.5%. The other things that we're making assumptions on, we've already mentioned, are HSA contributions. I did want to mention to you, it's going to be a little bit of an increase in expenditures for the HSAs this year coming up, because if we do 2/3 in January, I'm doing half for July, right, and then another 2/3, so within a budget year, I'm going to have slightly more than what would be a full year, it's going to even itself up after year, but that caused that to be slightly higher. Our federal allocations, now we're getting into some of the grant stuff, but you've heard us talk about Title I, Title II-A, Title I-D, they're all allocated at basically 85% of what they were, the feds have tightened up their money there, and the other part of that is, this budget does not include any carryover money, because, A, we're not quite sure where that is, and we usually adjust for that at adjustment time, and the other part would be, is we're not going to have as much carryover. We had quite a bit here, and we've spent most of that carryover, so those federal grant dollars are going to be down, that, the same would be for 31A, while we're going to get that amount, we won't have the carryover that we did after that first year. That always fluctuates, depending on what expenditures you had and what was left there, could be less and less carryover if they keep funding us at 85% of what we had the year before. That causes things to happen that we don't really control. I do always, too, mention to everybody, we always look at our staffing patterns, I think that's the other thing that's been something that we've done, we really try to analyze vacancies, replacements, do we need additional, do we need to reduce? I think that's important, we do, and I think sometimes, and I just wanted to say this, but, that additional salary always comes with more than just that salary, people will often say to me, well, you know, that'll cost you a starting teacher's salary, they'll say, that's, I don't care, 40,000, and I just want people to realize that with that comes at least 50% of that in state retirement and FICA, and that's not the other benefits that come in there. So, it's often that, you know, if we took, I think the average teaching salary now's in the $70,000, say 70,000, there's going to be another 35 on top of that before we talk about the cost of benefits. Not complaining about that, but it's just important to know, that's why we try to watch our staffing levels, we need to make sure they're important, and that we can continue to provide them, that's the other thing. A lot of people look at staffing in the one-year term, well, that's going to grow, so we always have to look at and say, can we support this, or are we creating something that's unsupportable as we go forward? So, something that we try to do, that's one of our major expenditures. So you have a chart that you'll be able to see, and again, you have copies, this will go on the web, at least the PowerPoint, not the presentation, but you'll be able to see the PowerPoint itself. You can see the expenditures, the chart that I have is a comparison between our budget we're proposing for 1920 and what we had in March of our 1819 budget. Tough to compare, because I want you to remember a couple things, typically, March has every grant that we're ever going to get in there and everything that's there, and the starting budget typically does not have that. You would notice a couple things, expenditures are actually down, they're just not down as much as the revenues, okay, so you put those two together, that's going to kind of get to our final line here. On the expenditure side then, we are looking at an expenditure of $83,117,259. And again, if you're just doing quick math in your head, you realize that at least in the beginning part, that we will have to dip into fund balance for part of that difference, because there is a difference. Before I leave expenditures, I would tell you again that the pie chart that you typically will see, it is 85% to 86% in personnel costs, and the other things that are out there, like the purchase services you do, the contracted services, supplies, capital outlays, much smaller portion of that part of the budget, and even if you look at it in terms of, we've worked very hard with that general fund expenditures, if you look at the amount of money that goes towards classroom instruction, student support, instructional support, we still try to keep a lot of our money in those areas, so you'll see that when you look at it, I think roughly about 77% of it. The others, about 12.4, administration of any kind, building, any place, about 7, and business, HR, the things you need to keep a business running, about 3.5. So, when we get to the general fund snapshot, I guess I'd point out to you again, So when we get to the general fund snapshot, um, I guess I'd point out to you again. Um, we're looking at budget of revenues for the nineteen twenty budget of eighty-one million, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. And the budget expenditures of eighty-three million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. That is a difference and it's, uh, we'll have to dip into fund balance then for one million, nine hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and five. So, um, that's about one point nine million. Mentioned a couple of things to you. We always have had a variance. So when you get a chance to look at that in your packet, um, the only thing I've changed there is I've typically been very, very conservative and projected it at one percent. I did project this one at one point five because in all honesty, in the last ten years, it's been between two and three. So I think one point five is still a pretty good comparison. That would generate an additional, uh, one point two, almost one point three million. So the anticipated shortfall would be about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. I want to mention a couple of things on that if I could. Um, one is you are purposely going into fund balance for at least a couple of things. So when you look at that amount after the variance, the six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine forty-seven. Out of there, um, you are scheduled to spend out of your fund balance, two hundred and five thousand from your STEM grant. Don't ever forget, you put the money in there for a reason and that's one of the reasons. So that's there. Um, you're also going into your technology. Remember, we siloed some things assigned versus unassigned. One of them is technology. And if you remember, we've been switching over the middle schools to Chromebooks as the new sixth grade has come in. So they get to keep using the same computers they had in elementary school. And so we're due to do another one of those and that's typically somewhere in a hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. At least that's what we earmarked. And there's a little bit of IB money, not very much in the diploma program that would run itself out. So if I put those together in a purposeful way, what you put the fund balance together for, for some of those assigned restricted things. You're going to take out about four hundred and ten thousand dollars out of that six hundred thousand. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention and I would show you and I showed you at the budget workshop. Um, I don't want you to think of it as, as a deficit budget. Your fund balance allows you to start the year, uh, with a balanced budget. Um, I gave you historically ten-year run of what you had done previously. We've only, as, as late as two thousand fifteen, sixteen. He, if you want to call it an adoption where the expenditures exceeded the revenue, that you were still doing that. Now, by the time we get the variance and come in at the end, the last three or four years, we've been able to put money in that fund balance, which you need to do. Um, because that builds it, but that's not meant to be doing that all the time. In actuality, um, I ran a couple of things on this one just to see where we would be. If the average revenue percent of what we end up at the end audited and the average expenditures come in. You'll have a balanced budget. You will not actually touch your fund balance. If you get the extremes, you can think of that two different ways, right? Worst I've ever seen the revenues come in compared to what you started with. And the worst I've seen the expenditures come in, then you could be closer to losing that s- uh, six hundred and fifty or taking that out of fund balance. Um, up to, you know, the full one point, uh, nine if you had no, uh, change there. But I would tell you that the, um, that's really not what the averages would tell us would happen on that one. In no matter which case you look at, um, I looked at the variance to cover it all would take about two point three. And we're looking, that would be right in the wheelhouse of where you've been. And like I said, um, our job's not to, our job's to put a fund balance together that's healthy, allows you to do lots of things. But it's not to become just a continual bank of things you do. And that's one of the steps you have taken in a budget. Uh, the other part I looked at was so you would have an idea. You see lots of different fund balances. People are going to give you lots of different percentages. There's just how much is in the fund balance? Then there's what we call the restricted and the unrestricted. And then restricted is gifts that can't be spent for anything else. We've been trending and those numbers are, are, are higher. And you'll see those in some of the charts you have in there. The other number they had for you, just so you would know, is what we're now calling the unassigned fund balance. Because not only do we have those gifts that are there and inventory we've paid for, a little bit of workman's caps we serve. But we've been, uh, siloing money for copiers and technology because the bond doesn't last forever in those areas. And they're both going to come up down the road someplace. We're trying to set the money aside. So when we get there, it's not such a hit to the general fund. It's already been saved and sitting there. And when we look at that part, um, we would be looking at about at the end of next year, if all that variance comes true. Eighteen point seven percent in that unassigned, which is still a very healthy place to be. If you just talk about total fund balance, you're going to be twenty-two, twenty-three percent. Depends on where we end this year, to be honest with you. As do all these numbers. Because don't forget, every time we do this, I'm giving you one fund balance and I will do that next, uh, board meeting on the eighteen nineteen numbers, but it's still that audit that comes in. And you know what actually got expended because we're going right up to the last day of June. Um, whether that came in, didn't come in, the auditor wants us to attribute it to this year, next year, all those points that come into being. So again, uh, this is one that, uh, you still have a, a pretty, uh, healthy, uh, general fund balance. Um, you still are, uh, you know, at a point where you're purposely going in to spend some of the money, but in the same token, I really do feel when I look at it that when we, when we get to the end with the variance, that this is in essence, uh, a balanced budget. That's really tough to do. Now, with the uncertainty of the state, Mike's mentioned this a couple of times, but I think it's really important we talk about it. It's possible you're going to have to do an extra adjustment next year. I mean, if you know in October, November. Hey, the, the student count was way wrong and the state gave us more or less. You might decide, um, Brian might decide and Lori might decide. They wanted to do an adjustment earlier because when, when that's unknown, you know, that's a bigger number. Now, don't remember, we won't know numbers until we hit the October count day. So that's why October might be a tough one.
It would be my recommendation we do with not getting a state budget until late fall, so.
And so at that point, that's the budget where we're at. And again, um, I, I get one last chance, I guess, to, to thank the people. It is a, uh, major undertaking to put a budget together. Um, and so I can't, I gotta thank Lori Holderby in the business office. They, they do the hardest part of the work. I get to talk to you about it and they put in a lot of time. And then it takes every department on an eighty-one million dollar revenue or eighty-one, eighty-three million dollar expenditures. Um, takes a lot of people out there to analyze how they want to spend their numbers. Um, you know, my job is to question them always to make sure it's something we really need. Um, but in, in essence, without the departments, the building principals, um, all the financial people that help us out there. Um, all those people thinking about those things, it's hard to put a budget together for you. But I didn't want you to think it was a singular effort. It never is. Like I said, Lori really pulls the bulk of the, the work she has to do. Most of the heavy lifting on it. So that's the budget. Uh, it does, certainly I'd answer any questions for you. And of course, we always follow it with, um, by law, public hearing on the budget. So I, if there's any questions and I can help, please ask and I'll do the best I can answering for you.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I had a couple.
Sure.
Uh, great job, Bob, uh, and Lori and the whole crew. We're just, um, looking at a couple of lines. We have plant repair and maintenance and sinking fund. And then in another spot, we talked about sinking fund and prime, prime program.
PRME.
That's the capital projects fund. It was always referred to as plant repair. Plant, repair, maintenance and equipment.
Okay.
So back before ninety-four, this district actually, when they set their own millage rates and you were collecting everything locally. They put in, I think it was a one mil, but they came up with that every year. And that's how they funded capital projects. Of course, they went away the year ability to do that. So we've tried, and one of the things you, you, if you look at the sheets, you'll notice, we've been trying to put some money back into that fund. So when things come outside the bond, you haven't. The sinking fund was money left from the sinking fund. And that board decided back then to hold the last little bit they had. It was just under a million. Um, not forever because that was voted on by your public to use it to repair things. But it was at a time before they had the bond.
Your last collection sinking fund was two thousand fourteen. So we've made that dollar, those dollars spread. The intent was to spend them. And so we have sinking funds, the new terminology after proposal A, PRME was before. And sinking fund would be, uh, pays you go, collects taxes, spend it the following year, but only on repair. It's not to build.
Okay. So with the plant repair and maintenance and sinking fund, we should be aware that we may need more money in those categories because of still in aging infrastructure and things that aren't being upgraded through the bond.
We would do two things. The sinking fund would only be if you voted one in because you, that, that goes away once you spend it. The other part I tell you in the capital improvement, we've been trying to put money away this year. And we will try as if we can at all, as we cause that eighteen nineteen, put a little more. There is not at this time any money going in in nineteen twenty just because where we're at. If that turns around. Uh, you'd absolutely, Brad, we would want to make sure that you, you keep putting some money there. Because even when you look at it now, do not forget, um, that's where the press box is, the insurance money for it, et cetera.
I would take it a step further too, Bob. So we, we need, that's priority one is to continue to build into the capital funds. Because we have funds for the academic interventions. The second one is we built that bond with the idea that there would be an opportunity to have a zero tax increase. We've been not, eh, not able to pin down our consultants yet on what that date would be. And it is a goal of mine because I ask about every few months, I want to know what that date is. And most likely, I may not be the guy around by then, but we set that up responsibly to be, to continue. But I do think there's going to be a gap when the bond works done, not the technology money, that's that last series. Uh, when the bond work and our buildings are done before we can do that zero increase going forward. So a zero increase would be going to the citizens and saying, and, and remember, when we sold the bond, we said this all along. Um, if you can, if you would vote to continue to pay the same rate for a long, the next, for another additional so many years, it would bring in this income. You have to, you have to figure out. Now, the other one is you had a sinking fund and you let it expire in two thousand fourteen. A sinking fund is, so you do major upgrades to your home and you borrow to do so. Um, somewhere down the road, you would like to be able to maintain it as you go, right? Put money aside out of your check and each year do a project. That's what the sinking fund's for. I think we should also pull our citizens at some point and say, would you be interested in a, and sinking funds are small. Usually typically point five to one. It might be even cap, Lori, is it one, one and a half? Uh, there's a cap somewhere in there. You can only go so big. But for this district, that's a fairly large number that you could bring in and main, do your ma- maintenance project each year. I've had the question asked by the foundations or the Dow High Field is, um, where's the district's capital funds project? Well, there really isn't one, by the way. School, what we're doing in capital funds is unique. School districts, when proposal came in, they did not plan for capital improvement through the, through that revenue source. You can only go out for bond or sinking. And so it's a tax increase or a ta- keep your tax going in order to do so. So to squirrel away money to do capital improvements when eighty-five percent of it is personnel is a difficult one to do. We're doing a decent job on it, but, um, hopefully that answers the thorough part of your question.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, great questions, Brad. Uh, so one point nine mil, it sounds a little daunting. Uh, but it's just a potential deficit, right? Uh, I, I think the big takeaway is that we've worked hard to position ourselves to weather this storm if it ever comes to fruition. Um, so there's a lot of optimism, Bob, that you've given us, um, and a lot of things to look forward to, and I appreciate that. Um, again, you guys have done a tremendous job, um, putting this forward. And just to, to reiterate, uh, this is going to be on our website, right? For anybody who wants to take a look at it. And for those of you who, um, have joined us tonight, if you'd like a hard copy. Um, I think we could probably get you one after the fact, uh, because we didn't have a presentation.
When the printers get up running too, they're down due.
We can't copy right now, but yeah, we publish the PowerPoints right on the website. So it'll be right there, same documents that I just read off of.
Any other comments? All right. All right. Moving on, three point four. At this point, I will open the floor, um, for comment on the public hearing of the twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, general operating budget only. So if there's anybody who would like to come up and address the board, now's the time to do so. Okay. We'll close the floor and, uh, move on to our summer tax rate, continuing with Mr. Cooper.
Yeah. What we always have to do, because the city is trying to print your tax bills if you live in the city. They want to know how much should they levy, uh, uh, for, especially the hold harmless millage. Um, and so that's what you have in front of you. Um, it's not the, um, countywide one that goes out. Typically, I've been doing that in July to September, depending on when we get it figured out. Brian, Brian will take care of that. Um, that one will feel very much like this one. This is just to get to the city to let them know how to split it. Um, the important part is where you get to the now therefore be it resolved, uh, not the other parts of the statement. Um, but basically you'll look and, and it talks about the eighteen mils I talked about being split nine and nine. And talks about that hold harmless millage being split at one point, uh, eight zero nine zero into point nine zero four five twice. And, uh, the, the, uh, commercial personal property is a six mil by state, uh, requirement, and that's three. And our two point nine five on our bond, uh, would be separated into one point four seven five, uh, both in the summer and the winter collection. So that's what this does. After you pass it, I send it on to the city. They're waiting patiently. Uh, and then they get to print your tax bill. So it's just telling the city that you're splitting, uh, the rolls and asking for it that way.
Okay. Um, this is an action item, so we, uh, will need a motion and a roll call vote.
I move to approve the resolution certifying the tax rate that is to be levied in the summer of twenty nineteen on the property of the school district within the city of Midland. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original with these minutes.
Support.
Okay. Moved by John, support by Murray. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. President Singer is absent. Vice President McCarland?
Yes.
Secretary Baker?
Yes.
Treasurer Fidel?
Yes.
Member Blasey?
Yes.
Member Lottebuck?
Yes.
And member Roush?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Moving on, item three point six. This is the superintendent's contract renewal. Uh, and just to introduce this a little bit, um, every year in December, the Board of Education formally reviews, uh, Mr. Shero's performance. And following the most recent review, uh, the board has unanimously given Mr. Shero an overall performance rating of highly effective. This is the highest rating possible and is based among and in among other things, including student growth, district goals and five key performance categories, uh, which are made of, uh, governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, and instructional leadership. And with that being said, I will take a motion to extend Mr. Shero's contract one year, uh, which will take him through twenty twenty-four. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
So?
Support.
Any comments? Moved by John, support by Phil. I'm sorry, Cindy. Um, Lynn, and any comments?
I was just going to, going to say it's, it's a pleasure to be able to renew it. I think Mike's been a great leader and in so many areas and, um, we look forward to that added year.
Mike, I'll also say that, um, you know, and I've said this before, you're a leader by example. And I think that's a big difference between, um, being a leader and being a boss. Uh, people respect that, um, a- and just to kind of highlight that, uh, your wage increase is, is in line with the other work groups. Uh, you know, you're not taking anything exorbitant. In fact, um, you frequently take less than, uh, your peers. Um, and you continue to do an outstanding job. Um, you're accessible to us on a very regular basis. Uh, you're accessible to your board member, to your fellow administrators, uh, to your teachers. You're an excellent communicator. Uh, you keep us very well informed of issues within the district that could, uh, affect the board. Um, our district is performing academically at some of the highest levels in the state. Our achievement gap is continuing to close. And you continue to innovate and come up with new and creative ways to stretch our budget. And to ensure that the maximum amount of dollars are being put into the classroom where they belong. Uh, so a few reasons why I'm very happy to have you here. So is there any other discussion before we, uh,
Well said.
Yeah, can't say anything better than that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mike, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, item number four, request to address the board. Anybody would like to come up and address the board at this time? No? Okay. Moving on to five, uh, curriculum, instruction and assessment. Ms. Miller Nelson.
Uh, we just have, oh, I'm not Mike because I just think I was talking.
It actually.
Yeah. I'm sorry, did I miss something?
We just have, uh, study committee minutes. That's all we have.
Oh, just, okay.
Yes.
And I have those.
Many, Penny's not spending any money tonight.
I'm not.
Okay. Lynn's got the minutes then.
Yep. We met at the Building Trades House on Monday, May twentieth, which is always one of our favorite meetings. Um, Kevin Dodick, Building Trades teacher and Bill Brown. Um, Kevin Dotick, Building Trades teacher, and Bill Brown, City of Midland Building Department liaison, and the Building Trades students discussed the overall Building Trades project and partnership for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. This year's partnership included the City of Midland and Habitat for Humanity. The students provided the tour and shared details about the learning experiences they had with the various aspects of construction, including framing, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, and finished carpentry. The students expressed great pride in knowing they are giving back to the community through this construction project. This opportunity was also used to recognize seniors graduating from the Building Trades Program, and to celebrate that nearly all are entering post-secondary programs or careers in the skilled trades area. And we will resume our meetings in September of twenty twenty, and it, as always, it's just amazing to me what these students can build with the, with the guidance of the, the adults and their mentors, and another beautiful home, and really exciting that they were able to partner with Habitat for Humanity this year. And, um, some of the student, they had the students placed in each of the rooms, so it was kinda neat. They, they really took pride, as it says, in sharing what they did and what they learned in, whether they were working in the kitchen, the bedroom, the bathroom, and how much they learned. And, uh, so as always, one of my favorite meetings.
Okay, Lynn, thank you. Uh, item number six, facilities, finance, and operations, and it looks like, uh, some minutes from, eh, Mary.
Yeah. Um, we met on June third. Uh, Mr. Dombro from, uh, Barton Mallow provided the FFO committee with a construction update and bond work list, uh, review, and the summer twenty twenty project process pers- uh, update. Uh, Mr. Cooper reviewed and discussed the items that, uh, we've already looked at. April financial reports, upcoming summer tax resolution and millage rates, um, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, employee salary letter, and the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty proposed budget, and the superintendent's contract and compensation.
Okay. Thank you. Item six point two, uh, it's gonna be Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, for your information only tonight, we have seven gifts totaling five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And while that kinda slows down here at the end, 'cause we do slow them down as we're trying to close out the books, it'll start back up. I did wanna point out just two of them there. They're for lots of different things, but people often ask, um, you'll notice food service scholarships from a couple of different groups there, and so, uh, that from time to time becomes, uh, an item out in the community they talk about. We have a very generous community, and that would just be a smattering. Lori would tell you that, that we get lots of individuals and groups that wanna donate some money for, uh, students that are not able to pay their lunch bills, and, and we try to do all that quietly, so it's not a very well-known thing, nor would we want it to be. We just go in and take care of balances, and there's lots of people in the community helping. There's two that are there that I thought would be nice to point out to you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Uh, and as always, thank you, uh, to Oliver Donors. They are very gracious, and we're very blessed to have, um, these gifts coming to our district, uh, every meeting. So moving on to number seven, uh, human resources. Uh, Mike, you're listed as the.
Yep, I'll take that one if you don't mind. Uh, we have one retirement to announce tonight, and that's Ann Bennett, a paraprofessional over at Seabury Elementary, and that retirement took effect on May thirtieth.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Um, item number eight is just kind of listed in the, uh, agenda as upcoming meetings. Uh, moving to item number nine, uh, correspondence to and from the Board of Education is identified in the agenda and will also be, uh, listed on the broadcast of this meeting, if I understand that correctly. Is that right? Okay. Uh, for number ten, study discussion, uh, we're gonna do it a little different tonight. Um, if, if there are any board members who would like to see a topic of future study brought to a committee, um, please feel free to speak up, otherwise, uh, we're gonna waive the personal comments tonight and just give the floor to Mike. Anybody? Okay, Mike, floor's yours.
Wow. Um, Dow High Events Center, so the Citizen Committee, uh, who's been working on that project, submitted, um, their grant application to the foundations. Uh, we were asked to d- turn around and do that for them, that they were not a five oh one three C, we need to do as our organization. And so, um, as I wrote you, um, I did so, and we wanted to be, um, take the stance of at least being neutral on this project, and, um, I tried to answer the questions the best I can, and s- and saying that would, would a turf area be nice for this district? It would, but it wasn't our top priority, um, with some of the academic things or other capital projects we may have, um, in the district as well. So we'll see where that goes from there, but I think we did what we were supposed to do on that piece of it. Bond and capital improvement projects, busy summer. Um, maybe even not as big as dollars, some of them, but it's, it's five or six different sites out there going on, and so there's a little bit of management there. Um, we seem to be on schedule. The rain has not helped on the Adams addition particularly, so a little behind on the bricks eh, or the foundation on that, because the mortar and the wetness of that, so, um, but that one, you know, always opens up later in the school year, so n- not a big issue on there as well. So at this point, Adams cleaned out, and by the end of the weekend, it was, um, completely, um, demoed. And so we're, we're, we're doing very well so far on all of those pieces going forward. As Bob mentioned, House released its budget. We weren't sure we were gonna see a House version, and it wasn't necessarily a real friendly version either to us, so, uh, we'll see where all those goes. They had the benefit, though, of knowing that the, uh, revenue, last revenue consensus showed that growth wasn't as big as expected. Not down, but not as big as expected, and so, um, the truth probably lies somewhere in between. There's three vastly different budgets now. You know, it was semi-close in some categories, but not in others, so it'll be interesting to see them work through this process. I think Phil went to a meeting today and listened to some of that as you, as we went, so. Alice, if you remember that acronym, Alice, we introduced that last August. We tr- went and sent two, uh, people from every building to be our trainers, to be in in-house trainers, and now we are scheduled to, um, begin to practice those in each building this year. We'll practice, readjust, uh, reteach, and by the end of the year, we hope to run a full-scale exercise with Alice and determine if we're ready to call ourselves as an Alice district in, in, um, fall of twenty, uh, meaning it's another technique for teachers to be able to use in, in a moment of crisis. And so, uh, we're moving forward on that. Crisis go, we fully implemented that. They practiced using their, with their drills, and so we're, um, moving along pretty well with that. I s- it, the tool actually itself continues to grow and become more powerful, um, and we'll continue to try to use that in different ways as well, 'cause it has a lot more power to it than actually what all we're doing with the alert system on this piece. Digital radios are in, going, we, a little frustrated, we got a little dead spot in the district. Uh, I think Bob'd be glad he's not the guy dealing with it going forward, but we're working with the company best we can. And, um, it may cause us to have to purchase a repeater in a couple of areas. Um, what we were promised on coverage i- isn't coming through all the way on that, so a little work on that, but the digital radios are a nice tool as well going forward, so. Restorative practices, um, as you know, we've been, um, training our staffs, beginning to work on that. Um, we're going to try to apply that to our data suspension at the end of the year. We've always looked at our student discipline data and our suspension data, uh, but now we're gonna set some target growth areas of decline. Couple buildings did that this year, and, um, showed some really nice inc- um, decline in the middle school, you know, past, we have, um, passed the program there, so that's helped really nice, but maybe time to expand it and move on. The last one I'll close with tonight is, Michigan Department Ed released finally the guidance on the third grade reading initiative and where those cut scores will be. Um, it was probably good news for us, as we were, I'm a bit panicked about, um, would we ha- be having a lot of retention talks with a lot of parents? And it, it was a very few, when I say few, single digits, um, district-wide, and so that would be a good thing if it stays that way. But a large group there that still needed interventions, so they wouldn't be retained, but still needed interventions, so that were, that's where our target will be, and our growth area will be with the third grade reading legislation. So it's now called Read by Grade Three. Um, so you know what that is going forward, and that's all I have since it was a short two weeks from between meetings.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, item eleven, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.